Ten second countdown and then start recording. Ten, nine, eight. All right, good evening to everyone. We are here at the Board of Education Center and online for the EDI monthly, well, bi-monthly meeting, our Equity Diversity Inclusion Board Committee. And so I welcome all of you. And for our official welcome, we have with us our board chairperson, Ms. Stephanie Adams.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Dr. Smith. I hope everyone is doing well. Welcome to our monthly meeting. It is good to see your faces. I look forward to the day that we can do this in person again. I miss those interactions with this group. But just, you know, one thing I just want to say during this welcome, the next couple of weeks, we are in early voting time. And this is an incredibly important election. And just remember that your vote matters at the local level, the state level, and the federal level. So if you haven't gotten out to vote yet, please do so. Early voting options are open all over the county. My family and I just went together on Sunday, so just encourage you to do that. And just welcome all of our members. And we've got a pretty full agenda tonight, so thank you for all being here. Back to you, Dr. Smith. Sorry.
All right, thank you. First on our agenda, we have announcements. We just want to give some time to any committee members that might have some announcements that they'd like to share, whether they're community-based, specific to your work, grounded in equity, or just related to the work that we do. So announcements. Not hearing any. I actually have a couple. One is, I sent out an email this weekend, or actually a couple, and I do apologize, I was just so excited. My weekend was just really filled with the work of equity. Ms. Adams and myself signed up for the Color of Education Conference, and I'll say this, and I don't know if you guys have had this experience, but when you have a conference, but you're at a conference, but you're still sitting in your office, it's like an invitation for people to come into your office. And so even though I was at the Color of Education Conference, I still found myself being entertained, and in the presence of, I won't say interrupted, but entertained and in the presence of other folks. So when I got the links this weekend for the Education Color Conference, I was just so excited. And to just to listen to those. And what I'll say is, if you will just give a few minutes to listen at least to the keynote, the opening presentation, you will not be disappointed. The information, the data, just is, it's just incredible that that's shared. It's one of those things where you think that you knew, but you really find out so much of what you don't know, in terms of that. And then also, I sent out a secondary email, I think, to all of you in regards to a screening this Wednesday. And it's On Smart Two. And it is a documentary done about the Chapel Hill Carrboro School System. And just from the trailer itself, it seems extremely powerful. It's my plan to do my best to watch that screening on Wednesday. There's no cost. You can register for it, and then be a part of that panel discussion. And then, if it's something that we see value in, I'd love to see what we could do to bring something like that to our district. And then finally, I wanted to share that I had the opportunity this past week to participate in the New Hanover County Diversity and Equity Roundtable with Linda Thompson. And we had Danielle Roseborough from the university, and Joe Conway from the hospital, and the police chief, the sheriff, just a whole host of folks were on that call and just sharing their work, their thoughts, their ideas related to our community, equity in our community. And then also, Tefana Thomas, who is one of the assistant county managers, spoke to and encouraged us all to think about how we can leverage the resources that are going to come to our community, from the sale of the hospital, around the work of equity. And so it was just wonderful to be a part of that conversation and to add the county's voice, the county's school system's voice, to the county's voice, and us moving our entire community forward around the work of equity. So those were just my announcements. I know we've got a couple more folks who have come on, so I welcome you guys to share your announcements as well. Announcements.
Um, I don't know, and sorry, guys, I was one or two minutes late, but I don't know if anyone's talked yet about the book study that we started amongst our work group, but it's going really well. I apologize if you guys can't hear me. I just got home and I'm in the yard, so, or on the patio.
We hear you great.
Okay, good. But yeah, the book study is going really, really well. I know from our end, Rachel and, woo, y'all, it's been a day. I'm blanking. But it has been, the book study's been really good. We had our first one a couple of weeks ago, so, well, October 1st. But we're doing Kennedy's How to Be an Anti-Racist, and it's just been really eye-opening as we've continued through. And he's talked about his experience of being a student in the classroom and what it was like. It's very powerful. I've really enjoyed that. And then I know I've heard from the ones there on the White Fragility Book Study with Holly and Andrea, that's also going really well. So that internal work is very important as well, and I appreciate everything Dr. Smith has shared with us this week, this weekend. I haven't had a chance to look at it yet, but you know, just remembering that the internal work is just as important as the external work that we do with our students and teachers. We've got to make sure we're being intentional about working within ourselves to cultivate that anti-racism. So.
And I think the name you blanked on was Christie Howe.
Yes, yes, Christie. I don't know Howe. And I can see Christie now. And like I said, it's been a day.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Website update. And I don't, I'm not sure if we see our two folks on here. I will say, I'm very proud of myself. I finally turned in my picture and my biography. And I apologize that it took me so long. But I know we're getting closer to that. I think there was going to be a question asked about just if we had the final approval to move forward with that. So hopefully, we'll have that finalized, and maybe we can send that out as an interim announcement. So Chair, if you could add that as an action item for us to send out an interim announcement about where we are with the website update. And then our social gathering update.
I think the, we already picked a date, but now we just have to do it. We just have to do it. That's it. I'm driving, so I don't know the date, but I know it's in October in relation to our meeting. So we just need to let the work group know. And then we're doing a hybrid. The people that want to come to the Board of Education can do so, and the people that want to participate virtually can do so as well. And I will put together an agenda for that. So announcements are going to be first. And then we're going to do some icebreakers, and then try to have a little bit of a meaningful conversation, but not too deep. And then just kind of next step, or do you guys want to do this again, quarterly, or no? And that's it. That's my plan.
Well, and what I'll say, Franshawn and Chair, if you could add this as an action item, I'll try to schedule a time with you and see if there's anything I can do to assist you from my end, you know, as a person on the inside, with you being a person that's, you know, external to the school system, so that we can collaborate together on that. Making sure the space is reserved, you know, refreshments, all that we need to take care of.
Okay.
All right, great.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
The Diverse Student Demographic Task Force met. I'm not sure if we should give updates at this meeting or at the Equity Work Group.
Okay. I did not have it on the agenda, but I think it would be great information to share if there are no objections. All right, I'm getting thumbs up. All right, Rachel?
So just briefly, we met twice. The first one was just kind of introductions and picking a meeting date and norms. And then the second one was really trying to understand how students get assigned to schools that aren't what is thought of as a traditional school district. So Denise Angivine really spoke to us about how the lottery works and how it's weighted for Cottington and Eaton, how the enrollment at Gregory works. And then we had some questions about high school specialty programs that no one in our group knew the answers to. So we were going to reach out to gather more information for understanding. And then the group had a couple of hopes. I don't know that you would call them formal recommendations, but to see if we could add second language status to the weighted lottery for Cottington and Eaton as like a risk, one of the risk factors that are screened for. And I thought that was a great suggestion. And, oh, there was one more that I can't remember, the second. But we were very much in understanding how things work. Pre-K also came, and Michelle Gray talked to us about enrollment. And they were hoping to maybe talk about how to appear in more elementary schools, so that the students were not just at the pre-K centers. So I don't know if we've got the right people coming to the meetings for those kind of big changes to happen. But we're just learning how to do this, and I guess who to invite to meetings, and then how to promote or affect change.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Rachel? So when you said add second language status as a risk factor, were all the other weights that go into the lottery called risk factors?
Oh, that might be Rachel Gray's word for them. There was one for zip code 28401. They explained that that's what they chose because race and ethnicity could not be used as a risk factor. And then education was another. And if you didn't graduate high school, I guess you got your name in the lottery. If you were 28401, you got a second, your name like counted twice. And then if you're lower income, it counted three times. And so they were wondering if it could count again, if English was your second language.
Which I think is a great suggestion. I was just concerned about if we're characterizing that as a risk factor, just that, that language. And I see a no, a nod from Julie.
Yeah, I can find the exact terminology, but yeah, they wouldn't be risk factors. They're characteristics that have weight to them. So I can, I can get that terminology. But that's also board determination on how those lotteries are done. Okay.
Yeah.
My apologies for the wrong words.
Oh, no, 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 no. I just, just wanted clarification. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. And thank you for that update. I think that is extremely helpful. And if you need some additional guidance about the specialty programs, Al O'Brien would be a great resource for secondary. Okay. Where we are in the agenda now is in terms of policy review discussion. And I've got Ms. Adams, Ms. Eastep, and then also Mr. Bowyer.
I don't see Mr. Bowyer on here. I may be wrong about that. But as you know, we've talked about it, that the district is currently going through a full overhaul of our policy manual. And we are working with the NCSBA to update our policies and to align with the NCSBA model. And through that, we talked about the importance of being able to look at those policies through an equity lens. And it's 8,000 Series is what it will be moving to. So we had a discussion, Dr. Smith, Ms. Eastep and I, about having an opportunity for everyone to review the policies through that lens prior to them going to policy. And I don't know, Dr. Smith, do you want to speak to that a little bit, when we talk about the focus and some of the things that we discussed, or Lisa?
Good evening, everyone. That, I mean, you pretty much talked about it. I think initially, the discussion was around someone going to the policy committee meetings from this committee. And we sort of reversed that and thought it would be better for the policies to come to our committee, so everyone would have a chance to look at it and give feedback. And that way, it would give a more complete opinion, or, and give more complete information back to the policy committee. So we just wanted some feedback on that from the committee and to see if that would be acceptable. So we were hoping that Nelson would be here to talk about the correlation table and how to look up the 8,000 Series. But we can certainly talk to the folks at the NCSBA to find out when the 8,000 Series is going to be addressed in committee, in the policy committee, and then make sure to bring those to this committee in plenty of time to get the feedback.
And I can, I can, I can share screen. I can go ahead and show them where the alignment table is, so everyone on this committee can know where to go to on the website to be able to start looking, if that's okay with everybody.
Sounds great.
Okay. All right. Can I go ahead and share? Let's see. This one. Oops. I don't want to delete myself out here. All right. Do you see New Hanover County Schools website?
Yes.
All right. So on the main page, you go to Board of Education, down to Policy. And on the policy, if you scroll down, you're going to notice there is an old policy manual and a new policy manual. We have been moving through and approving policies pretty much at every board meeting at this point. And so if you look at the preliminary correlation table, the 8,000 Series is specifically the grouping, it's Student Support, I believe, is the name of it, or Student Services. Anything that has an 8,000 in front of it. So here you'll see, over here on the right, the new policy is 8305. So you would want to look in the old policy manual at 1310-4002 for parental involvement. So that's how this is.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
I think you reversed it.
I reversed it. Shoot, you're right. Sorry, 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 sorry. So this is the correlation between the NCSBA policy and what our current policy is. And so what you want to look at is look at our 8,000 Series and figure out where it correlates on the other side. And I think when we went through this.
And there actually is a document that does the reverse order. Do you want to go back out and click on that one?
You're to go to that one. Yeah, let's do that. Go to the reverse correlation table. There you go. All right. So if we go down to, scrolling, 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 all right. So here we go. 8,000 Series for us, and what they will correlate to within the new policy. So this is how you can look them up to read them, review them, start becoming familiar with them. And we talked about breaking up into work groups. Dr. Smith, correct me if I'm wrong, around this conversation, to look at these policies. Do we want to discuss that?
Yeah, I'd love to know what the group's desire would be about how to do this. Do we want to chunk it? Or do we want to all go at it individually and then come back as a collective? Or do we want to, certain folks take certain policies and then almost do like a jigsaw? So I'm hearing chunk it. Yep, okay.
Um, go ahead, Sean.
Sorry, Tyler. Yeah, I would recommend chunking it, too. When we had the policy committee at the very beginning, before the NCSBA got involved, it was, it was very difficult to divide and conquer, so to speak, and get that meaningful feedback from the group together that, that I think could, could do it from that equity lens. So I think that it would be, it would be better if we, if we did it together, but just be really discerning about what we choose to review, would be my thoughts.
Yeah, okay. So what I'll do. Sorry.
I was just going to say, I agree with Sean in chunking it and doing it all, being able to go through it all together.
What I would say, too, is it might be best to wait until the NCSBA has a chance to prepare the, the policies upfront. And that way, it might not be, it might not be so daunting for us to take a look at it and try to, try to give feedback until we see what they have prepared. So we can certainly talk to McKenna and see if there's anything that, that they have already, already done, are already ready.
So the thought process for now would just be become aware of the 8,000 Series, you know, easy Saturday night reading. Who wouldn't want to go through policy? Check it out. Just become familiar with some of the things that are in there. And as, as we talk to the NCSBA, we talk to Mr. Bowyer, who's the chair of the policy committee, will be able to come up with a planning discussion around it with the equity lens if that worked for everyone.
What we could do is go ahead and add as an action item, just at least create our groups and assign some policies to them, so that when we do get the information from McKenna, we're ready to kind of launch. So Chair, if you could add that as an action item, that will create policy groups with assigned policies.
Will that just be, Dr. Smith, like a Google form? Like we would go in and sign up to be on a team? Are you going to put us on a work group and?
I really liked the idea of a Google form. And so maybe we can check the policies, and then based on the policies, you can decide where you want to kind of fall out.
Okay.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that suggestion.
And I just wanted to note, we had a very similar conversation at the Advisory Council for Exceptional Services on the 8th of October, related to policy, because the Board of Education went over first reading of several of the NCSBA policies at Tuesday, at Tuesday's meeting, the prior Tuesday's meeting. And we added a reviewing, like reviewing the updated suggestions or recommendations for first reading as part of an agenda item for that meeting, so stakeholders that are parents or students of children with disabilities, to give their feedback from that lens. So, so I think that that would be a really good measure. And Judy offered to help us with that, pull them in as needed, that sort of thing. So we have that connection going as well.
And that's very helpful to know. Thank you. Up next on the agenda, we have new membership timeline and process. And so for, I'd say the last couple of meetings, we have talked about the possibility and also the need for new membership. We sent out a survey to get, for the most part, a recommitment from existing members. And everyone who completed the survey indicated that they're, they remain committed to this work. Some acknowledged that because of, you know, other duties, responsibilities, they had to step away just a little bit, but they do remain committed. This process would be about adding some additional members. And I know the number five was shared last time. I don't know if we want to discuss that as the number, or if we wanted to look, maybe to see the number of applicants, and maybe take a percentage of the applicants, however, we want to do that. But the suggested timeline, and to some degree, part of the process, would be on 10/26, which would be next Monday, we would make a public announcement and launch the application. On 11/2, and that's our next meeting, we would decide on the selection committee. And then on 11/9, we would close the application. And then on 11/11 and 11/12, the selection committee would review those applications. And we would have to, a decision point would be, would the selection committee be the group who makes the final decisions about who would be on the committee? If so, then they would make notifications on 11/13 to those members. And then that would allow those members to attend our first meeting on 11/16. And then the suggestion would be to use that same application, which all of you would be familiar with, because you completed it to be a part of the process. And so I think decision points are, will the selection committee have the authority to approve membership? And if so, if not, then what's that process? And if so, how many new members are we looking at? Is it going to be the five? Is it going to be a percentage of? Do we want to talk about specifically the, who we're looking to have on the committee? I think those are places that we, we need to have some discussion.
So I really like the idea of a concrete number. I think that just makes it really simple to understand, as far as like, you know, maybe we say we're going to induct five members, three of which will be community members, two of which will be district members, or perhaps maybe three and three, three community members, three NHCS employees. That's just kind of where my thinking comes from.
Okay, thank you.
I do think, I like the idea of having a set number. I, I do think our group right now is pretty heavy as far as district leadership. So I would like to see us take more community members and parents on, as opposed to more district representatives.
Yeah, I, I agree 100%.
Also, for the members that had to step away for a little bit, would there be any consideration for looking for individuals from those particular areas in the community or the school system, to fill those spots back with people that, like if it's community members that stepped away, would you be putting community members back in? If it's school employees, would you be putting school employees back in?
So what I would say.
We can have a balance, looking for, keeping that balance.
Officially, we've only had one community member step away. And then what I'd probably say, kind of unofficially, more of the district folks, they're here, not necessarily as members that went through the process, but just as representation to answer questions and respond to. So a little bit of the voluntold, more so than folks who actually applied. So the only three people who have applied and were selected for the committee were Rachel, Tyler, and Cora. Everyone else who's a district employee, well, and Lena, I apologize.
Casey.
Okay. Well, let me say, let me say, from central office, let me. Well, let me say, let me say, from central office, let me, well, no, Tyler's not from central. I don't know what I'm saying. Okay. And, and the folks, we have representation from the Equity Work Group, but the folks from central office, let me say that. So Al and Jerel and Julie, they did not go through that application process. They really represent the administration. And so if we find ourselves voting on something, they would not be voting members. They're more here for information and background. Maybe, maybe that's a little, little greater clarity. And I do apologize for getting it all confusing.
That, that makes sense to me, Dr. Smith. And I think like, I, I would mo, I would make a motion that the selection committee do just, you know, be able to kind of run with it and do it and make whatever recommendation to everyone else. I don't necessarily think that there, this is just my, my stance on it. I, I think keeping it open so that that committee could look at, who are the people that are committed and who, you know, did the application process? Who are the people coming that are representative of, you know, senior leadership? And then where are the gaps? But more importantly, like, what do the applications say about the people that are going to be coming to the table in terms of their experience working in equity in the community or in other communities? Like what kind of critical lenses do they have? Not necessarily like who they are, what they look like or anything like that, but what experience do they bring into the table? So I'm not opposed to like Tyler's suggestion of, you know, five, six and a certain number. But I would say that, you know, I would trust the selection committee too.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with you, Casey. I would, I think if we vote as a committee to identify folks to be the selection committee, then I think we should grant them the authority. And I do agree that it really should be about the experiences. And, you know, I can just give you a couple of examples. I recently had a conversation with the UNC Chapel Hill professor who has relocated to the area. And I think I shared this with Ms. Eastep and Ms. Adams. And her background is research. And she wants to do research for us as a district. And I think what she brings is a very unique skill set and some very unique experiences. And then she also sits at, you know, tables and, and is part of conversations that, you know, I don't have the privilege of, of sitting at or being a part of. And I think someone who brings that to the table would really serve us well. And so folks that really have those broad routine experiences, I think would, would, would be incredible to, to include. And my thinking is, and I, and I understand, you know, you know, where Tyler's coming from in terms of limiting it, but I think just from the conversations I've had since we launched with just different people who have approached me, there is so much interest in this work that I think we had forty-three applications for the fifteen folks that we selected. I think we'll have even more applications for this new round of, of, of membership.
I think with, in regards to the selection committee, I, I agree with Casey's comment that if we select a selection committee and we vote on that, we should trust that, you know, their decision making. But maybe just for those that are not on the selection committee, if there's a chair, if we select a chair of the selection committee and maybe everyone has an opportunity to send their thoughts on what they feel this committee needs, whether it's representation, whether it's background and experience, but whatever it is they feel should be important or what we are missing here in this group or what is going to bring new dialogue into this conversation that we should all have that opportunity to share that with the selection committee so they're hearing from all of us. Because I know in our meetings, we always, we have so much to discuss and so much to do that we, that could be a really long discussion. This way, if we can write it down, then they have it and they can look at everybody at one time. And again, Google Forms, I'm a fan, you know, type it into the Google Form. What do you feel is important for this committee? What are we missing? Might be a good option.
And I agree with what Casey was saying with one exception about what they look like. I think that we need to do see what people look like because we want to represent what we're asking for diversity, equity and inclusion. So when you look at this platform today, you, you don't see as much diversity as you would like to see. You would probably like to see more. So I'm just saying, you know, we need to have a balance and we need to look at where the gaps are so that when we go out and say we're diversity, equity and inclusion, that we look like we are equity, diverse and inclusion.
Hundred, hundred ten percent, high five agree. There's some types of diversity that you cannot see, which is really what I said and I misspoke and I appreciate you calling me out, Ms. Beatty.
I would, I would also add for the selection committee, I think maybe it should be a co-chair position. I think there should maybe be one district person and one community person representative. I just think that makes the most sense. I have some names, but I'm not going to be that person that recommends that says, oh, I think this person should co-chair. But I think we do need people that are going to be very honest and forthright about who is selected. I think they need to represent, whoever is co-chairing needs to be part of an underrepresented population within, within the board, within our Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Board. Very much like Karen and Casey have said, we need someone that's going to look and view things through that lens. And I think, yeah, I just think that's very important. And again, a community member and a district employee, I think, would be a smart move for that.
Okay.
Open nominations for the selection committee or do we let people self-nominate?
Um, both.
I'm just going to throw this out there and she's probably going to hate me, but she's done it to me before. I think Fran Shawn would be really good for a community representation. But she can, she can throw me under the bus if she wants. I just appreciate her honesty and I appreciate that she always takes us to, to, makes us think from a different lens and makes us push further than what we even think. So I do appreciate that. So I think she would be a really good community representation member.
Okay. We have one nomination?
I'm cool with that. Thank you, Carolyn.
Any additional nominations?
I would nominate, I would nominate Sean Lamb.
Agreed. That's also, that's, and, and the parent representation is very important too. So I think that's also a great, a great nomination.
Sorry, Sean.
Sorry.
But I think, I think very highly of, of your opinions and also your honesty. And you represent an underrepresented population.
Yeah, thank you. No, happy to serve.
Okay. Any other nominations?
Should we, I think we should maybe have one district employee. Then maybe if we had three, that would probably be, I think, fair. And then that gives you an odd number as well. If people think that's a good idea.
Are we talking about just these three people being the entire selection committee?
Personally, I, I'm okay with it, but I don't know how that works.
Odd number is good.
Yeah, odd number is good.
Yeah, I think odd number is good. And I think that we should really stick to a number, like agree as a group. So I'm fine, I'm fine with five, I'm fine with six. But in terms of how many new committee members we're selecting, but I think that we need to go into it. The selection committee needs to go into it with an understanding like, this is your goal. Instead of, you know, because it, it gets just too big to manage sometimes and we're a little big already. But I do agree that there's gaps and we need help for sure, obviously. So I just want to throw in, I really would love to have a solid number.
So, so I, I definitely understand that. I'm just asking for clarification around the selection committee. So how lo, I agree the selection committee should be an odd number, but how many people on the selection committee? Is it three people on the selection committee or five? To, to choose who would be the new members. So five, okay. So we want five. So we'll have a chair, two, we'll, we'll have co-chairs and then we'll have three members. And then we'll determine how many new members we'll, we'll have from that. Okay? So we need at least three additional nominations? And at least one of those needs to, I think, be a district person.
I nominate Lena.
Okay.
And I'd like to nominate Gail.
Okay. Okay. All right. And we need one more.
I mean, Dr. Smith, can we nominate you? It kind of makes sense to have you involved in the process.
All right, all right, all right, all right.
I'm, I'm glad Sean, I'm glad Sean said it before I could.
All right. My ear, I'm trying to keep my ear pieces in and they don't want to cooperate. All right, great. No, I don't mind it a bit and I appreciate that. So now I'll tell you my experience with chairs and co-chairs, those are the people that do the work. So we've got two nominations for Chair, for the community person. And then I guess I would have to be the co-chair for the district. And I'll tell you this, I don't mind like stepping out of that seat and just letting our two community people be our co-chairs and I'll just be your workhorse. How's that sound? Would that work for the group?
I think that's a good idea. So what about, what about Fran Shawn and Sean being co-chairs? And then our, our other three, you, Dr. Smith, Lena and who am I missing? Sorry.
Gail.
Gail. Gail, yeah, then-
And the members. Okay.
Right. If people agree.
I think that's fine. I'm happy to do, like, I love spreadsheets so I can do all that sort of organization and, and help facilitate the whole process.
Okay. So what I'll do is draft, well, first we need to determine how many members we want to add. I mean, if we get a hundred applications, are we still just five members even if we get a hundred applications?
Yes, please. I'm begging. I'm begging.
I was about to say, I agree. I saw, I saw Stephanie doing the five and yeah, I just, I think, yeah, I agree.
You know, we started with our group, we only wanted ten, but you guys were just so good. And, and Ms. Eastep, Ms. Adams and, and myself, we just, we couldn't stop ourselves. And so we ended up with fifteen. But okay, we will be disciplined. So Fran Shawn and Sean, it's going to be all on you guys. I'm going to, if we come with the recommendation of ten new people, I'm going to say it wasn't me. All right. So what I'll do is I will send to you guys just a draft of the timeline. Chair, if you'll add that as an action item. And then I'll share with you the application. And then Caress, do you mind working with me on a district announcement? And we will get this launched by Monday.
Certainly will do.
Thank you so much. It is so wonderful having you so conveniently on the, on the EDI committee. So direct contact.
Do we want, Dr. Smith, do we want to send it in English and Spanish?
Oh, very much so. Yes. We'll send the survey in English and Spanish.
We have a translator who I will have as soon as I drafted. I will get her to trans, drafted and get it approved by Dr. Smith. I will get her to translate it for us.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll work on getting that sent out to you guys tomorrow, no later than Wednesday. And then we'll go from there. And again, it will launch on Monday with a public announcement that will be in English and Spanish. And then the survey itself will be in English and Spanish. Okay? All right, wonderful.
Can we go ahead and just figure out a deadline? Sorry to interrupt you, Dr. Smith. Can we just figure out a deadline for the feedback from everybody else? Because I'm sure myself and Sean and you and our other committee members want to have that feedback before we go into-
Oh, oh, yes, it is. So I would say that needs to come to you by Friday. Well, I mean, I guess we can give a little more time.
Said the application's not going to close until November ninth.
Yeah, so, um, so we're going to review on the eleventh and twelfth. So I would say maybe the, and I'm not looking at a calendar. So you tell me, Fran Shawn, with the application-
I'm thinking the same, the same deadline.
I was thinking Friday too.
Yeah, so just way, so if somebody just wants to start a Word document and then everybody can throw in their recommendations and then the selection committee will individually be responsible for reading those before we begin looking at the applications. Just so that we're going into it with everybody's voice, not just ours.
So who said-
From that point of view, I think we need to have those characteristics beforehand so we can meet and discuss them and try to create a profile so we can be ready for the ninth and then be more effective and diligent on what we are looking for. Don't you think?
I mean, I, no, I don't think. I, I think that, I think that it makes more sense for everybody to put it in a Google Doc. And then each individual committee, selection committee person reviews it. And then we just go into it with an awareness of that. And then as we're meeting, we can kind of discuss it. I'm just trying not to make extra work for people. But I do want, I think it's really important that we hear everybody's voice as we go into it.
So I saw the suggestion of it being due 11/2. Does that work for everybody? So Chair, if you add as an action item to create shared Google Doc to solicit feedback on a new membership. And then we'll share that out and then feedback is due 11/2. What we'll do is we'll create that and share it with everyone. And so the committee as well as the membership will have access to that. Okay? All right. Next item we have is annual report to the board discussion. And then also I wanted to talk a little bit about the upcoming board presentation. And this item I've got listed for myself, Ms. Adams and Ms. Eastep. And so just to kind of launch it a little bit, there have been some conversations about ensuring that the work that we do gets carried forth to the board in an actionable kind of way. And I know that other committees have, in essence, put together annual reports to the board and annual presentations to the board with recommendations. And so my question to the group, and definitely Ms. Adams and Ms. Eastep add to this, would that be an interest that we would have? To, to, as we move forward, as we work on our goals, to put together something that would be an annual board, annual, annual report, but annual recommendation to the board?
I, I think that's extremely important. From the board perspective, you know, if we're looking at budget, if there's budgetary obligations that come from those recommendations, obviously that's really important. But I also think it's important to be able to share some of the successes and the progress that's been made. You know, this is a committee that our community is very interested in. And they want to know what kind of conversations are being had. And is it just conversation or is it actions? And I know that there have been a lot of actions. And although this committee knows that, I think our community as a whole i- is missing that conversation. So I think that, for me, yes, I think an annual report is necessary. Rachel, I see your comment. I mean, I have no problem with it being twice a year, but that would, you know, to the will of the board to talk to everybody through that. But I think it's important, you know, we're, we're about a year in with this group and a lot of work has been done. And the work is going to continue. It is not finite. And so I think being able to see how we're growing and progressing would be very important, especially as we'll talk about strategic plan and in a minute too. Lisa?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's always helpful to, number one, not just inform the board, but you're informing the public when you, when you present in front of the board. One of the things we did and actually today in the Title IX Committee meeting, Julie, you were there, we did a look back. And Nelson and I worked on that to, it was a kind of a timeline review of where we were when we started and where we are now. And it, it's very helpful because sometimes when you're doing this work, you get bogged down and you get frustrated because you think you haven't accomplished anything. And then when you look back, you think, oh, okay, yeah, we've, we've really, we, we have moved the needle quite a bit. And it does help, number one, not to get so frustrated. And number two, it helps to keep you going. When you're, when you're doing this every day, sometimes it feels, it, it, it's tough because this is not easy work. Um, when you're, when you're doing this every day, sometimes it feels, um, it, it, it's tough, um, because this is not easy work. So, um, it, it's, for, for that alone, sometimes it's very helpful to go through and go, okay, you know, yeah, I can check this box off, I can, I can, I am, yeah, we, we did get, we did get through this, um, so I think it's very helpful. And going back to that word that, um, we use a lot now, which is transparency, it helps, uh, for that, for that purpose as well. So I would highly recommend it.
Um, th- this is something that I've kind of wondered about since we formed the committee, whether or not, like, that would happen. So I'm really excited to hear that, you know, we're at that point, and, um, I also, would also want us, or hope that we would as a group think about, like, if someone were to come up to you and ask you what the goals of this committee are, are you able to articulate them? Or do we have, or if I can't articulate them, do I know where to find them so that I can show you? Um, I feel like that's kind of the next, like, clarity step, maybe even before we, you know, make an annual report, to, to clarify some of those, like, from almost even, like, a metric standpoint also, like, which, which of the goals we have still need built in, um, you know, measurements and things of that nature, but, uh, that's my input on that.
So what I'm hearing is that there's a lot of support for this, and I agree with you, Casey, I'm, I'm very pleased that we're getting to a point, um, where we're going to be able to draft something and, and make very clear recommendations to the board, and I agree with you. I think there does need to be clarity around, um, our goals with, in terms of that. And I think we've tried really a bottom-up approach, um, in terms of determining what the goals are, but maybe if we do bring in some outside data sets and let that drive the work, um, that we can have some greater clarity in that. Uh, my suggestion would be that we wait for, um, our board update on November the tenth, and then maybe use that as a launching point, um, for our, um, report to the board, and maybe we start it as an annual report with, um, just an overall report, maybe, um, in January or a few months after that, and then six months out, as you suggested, Rachel, we do it again. Um, so how do folks feel about that? So we'll wait for our folks to do the report in November, use that as our guide, and then we'll have our board report in January.
I like that timeline, uh, because it aligns also when budget discussions are happening. Um, and so that's going to be a really important aspect as we move into the budget season.
Okay.
Can I just have a quick clarifying question? Sorry, so I understand the timeline, so for the report in January, are we also going to potentially include some asks from the board? Is that what we're saying, like, some actionable asks?
I would say yes. I mean, I don't want to predetermine this report, but I would say yes. I think that would be the opportunity for that.
Yeah, no, I agree completely. I don't think we're predetermining, we're not saying what our action items are yet, we're just saying, that's our goal.
Yeah.
Okay, I love that. I just wanted to chime in and say I love that, that's all.
Thanks. All right, and I think that's a great segue to our folks who are, um, or our person, because I don't think we have both of our folks, um, who are preparing our report to the board for November. And so we've got a community person in charge of that, and then we have a district person. I think that's Caress and Jennifer.
Are you wanting an update on that, or?
Yeah, I'll even take a thumbs up, how about that?
A thumbs up, we are working on it, and we will be ready to go on November tenth.
Okay.
Have nothing prepared for you guys today, but if, um, it's the will of the committee, we can certainly send you guys our presentation before, um, November tenth, so that everyone knows what will be presented and reviewed.
I think, um, I think that would be great, and I think we meet on the second, so we could surely put that on the agenda. Um, that's our meeting focused on breakout, but I think we could put that on the agenda as maybe one of the main items to give you that voice in, in the audience.
That will certainly work, and I'll, um, talk with Jennifer about that, and we'll have something for everyone to review.
Okay, sorry. You think, just keep following out. All right. Write myself a note. Will you put, uh, as an action item, Chair, add that as a November, um, second agenda item? Thank you. Great, um. So next item we have on the agenda, we told you it was a full agenda tonight, didn't we? Um, is strategic plan, um, input process. So what are the opportunities for our group to, um, provide input on the upcoming strategic plan? And I don't know if Ms. Adams, or you, or Ms. Eastep want to kind of share some of that discussion, and if not, I can surely, um, do that.
So the district's strategic plan, um, is coming to an end in twenty twenty. As a relatively new board, we're anticipating three to four new members. Uh, we have a new superintendent, uh, there is a lot of planning and discussion that is going to need to go into the next strategic plan. So what is most likely going to happen is we will hopefully look towards extending it a little bit to give us some more time. Um, we want to make sure that we create the next strategic plan with fidelity. Uh, we want to make sure that we are holding ourselves accountable to the next strategic plan, um, and it will be the guiding principles that we are all going to rally around, um, for the next five years. Um, although we don't know what that's going to look like exactly yet, um, obviously the board is going to have input, the senior staff, the superintendent. Um, I, I'm going to assume, and I shouldn't say that, I think equity will be a large part of that. Equity was a part of our previous strategic plan. Um, and so being that we have this group, um, that has been talking about equity within our district, has been doing the research, has been looking at the data, the feedback from this group and the work group is going to be very important. Um, and so we had some conversations around how the EDI committee could help influence some of the conversations around strategic planning over the next few months. So I will pass it to either Lisa or Dr. Smith to go further.
Okay, well, I will grab that torch, and, um, so what we discussed was, um, having different members of the committee host strategic mini-planning sessions, and so, um, someone could volunteer to host a mini-planning session around EC, um, LG, uh, BTQRA plus, um, RACE, um, community intersections in terms of housing, healthcare, employment, infrastructure access, and, you know, just whatever that list might be. Um, and what the purpose, again, would be to give voice, to establish some long-term goals, or maybe some preferred long-term goals, and to really leverage our work within different organizations. And so, um, say for instance, um, Rachel, if you felt passionate, if you felt passionately about housing in our community, and you wanted to host a mini-strategic planning session around housing and, you know, that intersection in our community and in our schools, um, and the importance of, then you could take that and, and, and lead that work and gather that kind of data, so that we would have that to inform the, the strategic planning process. If someone else felt very strongly about students with special needs, then that person could host that se- session, and then essentially we're giving time and attention over a long period of time and in a very in-depth way around these topics, um, in these specific areas. And so I'd welcome your thoughts, um, um, about that.
The only question I would have is how will those, those discussions, um, filter back up to the board? So how do we see that, how do, how do we see that moving forward?
So again, just my opinion, um, and I definitely welcome the thoughts and ideas of everyone. I think where we began was just really, how do we level the landscape so everyone has a voice in this? And so I would offer, again, just as my opinion, that if the board was aware that we were hosting these mini-planning sessions, then, um, whatever process we chose to capture, um, the thoughts and ideas, I mean, we could standardize that process, or it could be something that's specific to whoever the facilitator is, and I would actually recommend co-facilitators, so you've got someone who's facilitating the group, and then you've got someone who's capturing the information. And then that information could be shared directly with the board, and I'm assuming that the board is going to put together a strategic planning committee. And so more specifically, that information could go straight to the, the strategic planning committee. And if we do this in such a way that we're in front of it as opposed to behind it, then we're doing this prior to any decisions being made, any commitments being made, that type of thing. And so our information is broad, and it is re- reflective, um, and it is very encompassing. And then the list that I shared with you is just a really short list. Uh, we, we, you know, it is no, in no way, um, an exhaustive list, um, and then anything on the list could surely be changed as well. But I welcome your thoughts and ideas about that.
So, um, if I may say something, I have, I am not familiar with the way that the, uh, board, a county board approaches the strategic planning in terms of selecting the goal. I know for schools that have done it in the past, it's based on the, how they have progressed in terms of the goals that they had in the past, like an evaluation of how well they're doing, or the action steps that were left behind, and from there they start, um, like a new plan, based on the things that they want to continue, or things that failed, and then they need to revisit. So is, how is that, uh, decided here? How are goals brought to the table? Is from community input, or is from previous, you know, strategic plannings and items that are still undeveloped? Or how is that process?
Well, I think, I mean, certainly, I'm, I'm not going to be on the board for this one, so I can tell you from last time, um, I would say it was not a very inclusive process from my perspective. Um, and so I, I think it's safe to say that it's going to be completely transformed this time, and it's going to be much more, much more open, um, much more community-based, um, much more district-based. I mean, it's just, it's going to, and it's going to take a lot longer. Uh, so one of the things that, uh, I think Ms. Adams talked about was extending the, the deadline, um, to allow for that extra discussion and the extra, uh, those extra conversations. So, um, it, with that extra input, it's just going to take more time to develop those goals and the strategy. So this can be a part of it, this discussion. Um, you know, the, the, the discussion at the school level will happen, because the, um, the, those, those sit teams will have to become a part of this discussion as well. Um, you know, what happens at the schools, uh, that will be informed by the, by the strategic plan, and vice versa, if that makes sense. So i- it's going to take, it's going to be a lot more complicated to plan this, because those discussions are going to be a lot more wide-ranging than they were before.
One, one question that I would have is how many, like, strategic goals were there last time? And, and not that it's a limitation, but just that it could help kind of baseline us in terms of format and expectations, and, and like, at what level to, uh, to kind of shoot for?
So, I, I pulled up the, I should, I wish I had, I should have pulled up, it is on the website if you want to pull it up, but I do have the, the paper copy in front of me. Um, the last strategic plan had five goals. It was high-quality education, environment, partnerships, talent development, and lifelong learning, which they were all pretty aspirational and broad. Um, and so I think that when we have this discussion, uh, moving into the next strategic plan, thank you, Ree. Um, I think that we are going to be much more specialized in what we are trying to accomplish. Um, you know, there will be an aspirational umbrella, but how are we going to get there? Um, you know, if you, if you've talked to Dr. Faust at all, he is extremely data-driven, and, um, he believes in, um, you know, you can say we're going to do it, but how are we going to show that we're going to do it? How do we know we've accomplished what we said we're going to do? Um, and so I think that this one's going to look very different. Uh, so what are some of those equity points that we feel are, what can we hold ourselves accountable to? You know, one of the, um, the ones I just looked, you know, right off the top here, um, was about talent development. You know, recruit highly skilled employees from diverse backgrounds that can provide rigor, relevance, and engaging learning experiences for all students. That's great, but how are we going to do it, right? Because we've talked about that a lot, and that we actually have some things start to change in our recruiting processes around that. So being able to have those conversations, um, you, you know, I think they're going to be much more specific.
So question of clarification, what, what you are asking about is, uh, something that would be co-facilitated throughout the community, right? Like, we're, we're looking for community input and school system employees, students in the schools, like, whoever would show up, right?
A strategic plan should be coming from our community at large. If the school system touches you, you should be able to have a voice in the strategic plan to at least provide input. Um, and so we have to figure out how we're going to do that. Um, that's not how it's necessarily been done here in the past, um, but I think that it's a focus of this board, and, um, you know, I've spoken with some of the board members that are the, the candidates that are running. Um, you know, that's definitely the community voice, the teacher voice, the school-based voice, our student voice. Um, we want to hear those voices as we talk about, we know what the data looks like, but what does our community need as a whole? What does our business community see as a strategic goal would look very different from maybe a, a community partner? What is the strategical for them versus a student? So we want to hear from all of those voices, and from a, from an, um, equity standpoint, this group is a great, you all have, you spider out into the community in so many different ways, that you'll be able to help pull in perspective from so many different types of people and parts of our community.
So Casey, can I ask a clarifying question? So your question, was it specific to the whole process, or specific to what I was talking about?
Yes, it was specific to what, what you were, uh, bringing up as the opportunity for members of this group, you know, to, to co-facilitate.
So what we're suggesting is, it's, uh, it's almost exactly what Ms. Adams just described, but like, on a smaller scale. So it would be us taking a leadership role and making sure that that voice is there. And so, you, you know, to your passion, student voice, you know, that's not a area that I had listed, you know? Um, we know that however we build this out, um, we're going to have those community-based meetings, we're going to have that voice. But what if in, in that design, student voice is not elevated in the way that we would want it to be? So you could take the lead in, 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 in facilitate that in such a way that you've got, um, you know, additional information that we then could filter back to the str- strategic planning committee, and maybe they take that and go even farther than, than we went with it. Um, so it really would be, um, in my mind, us empowering ourselves to make sure that we're elevating, um, what's most important to us. Um, and I see that Shawn has a, a suggestion about, could we do a Google Doc for suggested topics? I think that's a great i- idea. Um, and, um, then we can see how many breakouts we're looking at and how to collaborate with stakeholders. I think it would be great. I think it would be us moving into the community in ways, um, you know, that we haven't before, but as Ms. Adams says, you know, we're all connected in some way, so, um, that would be the work that I'm, that we're proposing from our group.
So I, I'm, I, it sounds like we are going to move to a Google Doc, which I think is okay, but just while it's fresh in my mind, I just wanted to say the two things that I would be willing to co-facilitate a strategic planning committee meeting about, um, and I don't know if they fall under your category, but you already said Dr. Smith, but the first one would be, um, just staff support in terms of educators, like, how do we support our educators, and how do we retain our educators, and what does that look like? Um, both from a, like, training aspect, but also just in general support. Um, and then the secondary would be, which would be easy to measure, um, would be discipline referrals.
Um, and then the secondary would be, which would be easy to measure, um, would be discipline referrals across the board, but specifically in, um, people of color, LGBTQ+. Um, so those would be my two passions. Um, but it sounds like a rather big project, and you already said that we should co-chair, which I completely agree. So if there's anyone that's like, yes, I want to do that, um, I would be happy to co-lead. Uh, to me, they're separate things. Um, so if I have a partner in crime on either one of those, then I would be happy to take that on.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think this has been, thank you for that, Franchon, and I think this has been really great discussion because I don't think that we've ever found ourselves really in a position to kind of like leverage the next, not, not necessarily next big thing, but really where the emphasis and the focus of our district is going to be. And so I think it's great to hear the level of interest in, in doing the work, um, that will lead to that. So, so thank you to you guys, thank you to you all.
So I'm thinking on, on something in regards to a conversation that happened, I think, two years ago at the school in Williston, when they were trying to make it a performing arts school, and then they, what the community wanted was a very different thing. So I'm thinking of having the input from the, for example, organization like the Chamber of Commerce to see what is it that we need in our community? What kind of a student leaving high school we want to have here? And all of them thinking on going into the, the ca- uh, career readiness path, or they are thinking of more technical approach, what is it that we need right now? And definitely a language component, you know, that's my passion, like, like, what is it that the community wants in terms of that? Because this is the right time to start setting up goals for that and seeing our community growth on that regard. So, uh, that's, that's something that, to think about.
I would agree. So I think where we are now, um, is, um, we can send out a Google Doc to, um, get topics, and then we'll, um, identify, um, well, well, the person who suggests the topic, I'm going to assume that you want to be at least the co-chair, and then we'll get a secondary, so chairs and co-chairs. Um, and then also, um, Ms. Adams and Ms. Eastep, um, just as the board moves a little closer to this process, just your thoughts about what the timeline might be? And that'll help us to know what our timeline would be in, in getting these conversations started with the, with the community.
Um, I think the initial discussions are that we'll probably look to roll out a new strategic plan in summer.
Okay.
I, I think, I would, I think would be the goal, like, have it, have it completed and be able to vote on it in June, July. Uh, so, you know, we're, we're in October, um, have this conversation, have the election, see where we stand, you know, uh, and start those conversations as, as the board turns over.
So then I think we need to revisit this no later than December with, um, really action steps around launching these conversations. Okay, all right, wonderful. Care, if you'll add that as an action step. All right. Well, this brings us to pretty much, um, the end of the agenda items that I had. Um, but, um, I welcome anything that maybe we've overlooked or, um, a topic that we still need to give some attention to.
Dr. Smith. I just want to say that I love this, that, sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to say about, I feel like we're actually making progress, and it's making me very happy. And since I'm so vocal when I'm not happy, I just wanted to be equally as vocal when I am.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Franchon, thanks for being here. Um, I was just going to ask, would this be, Rachel, do you want to speak to that shared drive? Because, um, I know after our last meeting, Dr. Smith had forwarded the email that I sent to our subcommittee. Unfortunately, the hyperlink didn't go with. And so then, like, yeah, this is fourth time's a charm. We got a shared drive that Rachel put together, um, and then, then I asked Dr. Smith if it would be okay to go and make copies of all the former agendas and minutes we've had. So I've done that, and we've pulled it all into the shared drive. Um, but I was looking at it earlier, Rachel, and I think it has everyone in the equity work group. Um, but I think part of our question was like, who exactly is in equity work group? Who exactly is in the EDI? So we can go ahead and add all those emails, so everyone will have that drive. And the point being that everything's in one spot. You know, everybody's got access to everything in one spot.
I can share it if you want, um, Dr. Smith. I don't know if it'd be better to try to just share the screen so everyone can see what the shared drive looks like, or if everyone's familiar with shared drives in Google.
Yeah, if you want to share your screen, I mean, I, I think that would work.
Do I have those superpowers?
Yes.
Okay. Can you see my files?
Yes.
All right. So for those of you who have Google Drive, you can look at My Drive, Shared Drives. Um, inside of Shared Drives, um, there is a new drive called Equities. Diversity and Inclusion. And when you open that shared drive, um, I think everyone that I had emails for has the ability to add information in, but there's only a few people that can delete it. Uh, so I wasn't sure if, how we should set that up. If someone's not super familiar with it, they could mistakenly delete a lot. So I, I just said everyone could add for now. But once you get into the shared drive, you can access the book study files. And that includes the culturally responsive teaching book study that we did last year, and the white fragility and how to be an anti-racist book study. There's, um, files for the equity work group, our committee, and the task forces. And so in opening our committee, there's agendas and minutes, and the sub, um, subgroups of our committee. Thank you, that was a lot of work, Casey. Woo!
I just realized, I think we need to pull, I need to pull all those into that agenda and minutes folder.
So Casey's going to work on that. And so when you click on the book studies, you just see the book titles. Um, and any documents that aren't in the folders are applicable to multiple folders that are in that same level. And then the task forces are here, and I'm just going to click on the one that I'm on because I know there's files in it. Um, so we looked, like, this was our agenda at the bottom, and then these were the attachments that we perused to kind of understand the data of, um, our current enrollment in this school district. And I will stop sharing.
Thank you. Um, ladies, again, thank you enough for that. Um, I know that we have struggled in the past with just, there's so much in keeping it organized, and so this is really incredible, so thank you, I appreciate that.
I think we just need the other committee, if they want to utilize that, to add, or, I mean, we, we can easily add and create a folder, but anything that they, you know, and the, the hard part about the shared drive is you have to be an owner, right, of a file in order to move it in there. So whoever may have, like, any kind of documents or spreadsheets that that committee has used, um, if they're the owner, then they just want to slide them in there. Or if somebody else has access to them, the way I had access to the agendas, and I just made copies of them and then moved those copies into, uh, our shared drive so that now everyone can use them.
So are you talking, are you talking about the work group?
Um, no, we have the culture, climate, and what's the other one?
Okay, uh, yeah, yeah, no, I know what you're talking about now. Okay, okay, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so, so I agree. I think that would be extremely helpful if folks took advantage of that. And, and then you've got that kind of one-stop shop, um, to find that information and to be able to build upon it. Um, and I think it's going to be really important as we continue to move our work forward, especially around these strategic, um, planning, these mini-planning sessions. Um, it's going to be needed and necessary just to keep all of that information straight. So, yeah, yeah, thank you. Um, anything else?
Can I just say one thing that's not necessarily equity-focused? But, um, for those of you that are working in our schools right now, I just want to say thank you. Um, I know that the last week welcoming students back into the building has been extremely challenging as we're adapting to a new way of doing things. And, um, what I will tell you is the students are so happy and thrilled to see your faces, and you're showing up, and you're just giving them so much that they've been missing. Um, but I also know that it's been difficult. And we know you are overworked right now, we know you are tired. Um, but what you are doing is so important, and I wish I could change that. Um, I wish it didn't have to be this way. I, I sit on my son's school improvement team, and last week, um, I broke down at their meeting listening to the teachers about how hard this has been. My heart is with all of you, so full of gratitude and appreciation for what you're doing. And I just want to say that, um, because you're amazing. And anyone here that has kids knows how happy their kids are back to see your faces again. So thank you, and I just wanted to say that before I let it go tonight. And thank you to all of our community people for being here, as always. I love talking to such passionate people, it makes for a great week.
Yeah, thank you, your words are very much appreciated. I don't speak for everyone, but I think that would be hard to find someone who did not appreciate, um, what you've just said. Um, so we're now at our close, and so I'll offer that to Ms. Eastep, if you want to close out our meeting.
Well, I think Ms. Adams just did, she stole what I was going to say, um, which was just a big thank you. Um, I know it, it's been, it, it's been a rough ride. Um, and, yeah, our heartfelt thanks for all that you do each and every day. Um, district employees, teachers, admin, all of you, parents. It's been a rough ride for the parents, we know it, continues to be. Um, so for all of you, just, um, yeah, a big, you know, heartfelt thanks um, for the, for the heavy lifting you keep doing each and every day. And for being here anyway, so I hats off to you.
All right, guys, well, if nothing else, we will move to adjourn, and thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye, guys, thanks.
I'll take care.